I don't know. It's recording through the KTM. I'm going to record on here too. So if you're ready, I'm going to put this right here.
Oh, these up here?
Put this one here when you're ready.
There by five seat, we're going to start this meeting here in about a minute. He come door. Go call.
Councilwoman Ternary. Councilman Green. Mayor Pro Tem Litherland.
Here.
Councilman Salamani.
Here.
Mayor Ashworth.
Here.
Stand by as ladies and gentlemen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, public comment. We have James Coral. James not here. Uh, Matt Marchum with Edge Physical Therapy. Matt? All right. Well, it's been so long since we've had a meeting, I don't know where I remember that we got the meeting or not. I approve the minutes from last meeting.
I motion that we approve the minutes from December fifteenth, twenty twenty-one meeting.
Second. Bill, please.
Councilwoman Ternary. Councilman Green. Mayor Pro Tem Litherland.
Yes.
Councilman Salamani.
Yes.
Mayor Ashworth.
Yes.
Okay, reports. Sit in very very.
Good evening, Councilman Mayor. Uh, in lieu of my regular administrator's report, we have a number of presentations tonight. Uh, first, I'd like to welcome our VIP guests. We have our county commissioners that requested to say a meet and greet. Uh, I did all from seats at the dais since we're short, but they declined, so. Gentlemen, if you would like to come up.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, sir. And, uh, Tom, everybody's good to see you. And I know we've got some folks on Zoom. So we're your three county commissioners. As you know, like the mayor's race, we rotate chairmen. So I'm the chairman this year. So I'll set the table. We're here like we did last year, Mr. Mayor, to tell you that we care about the city of Cripple Creek. You know, I think it's important that we realize that COVID was here, it still is here. We've got some folks that we know in the hospital today. Lost fifty-five, lost about a million Americans. That said, it just sort of feels like to me that we're turning a corner. And so I say that because all those things that we were working on before with Cripple Creek, business after hours, recreational opportunities with Jeff Moser, Jeff, good to see you here, uh, housing initiatives, casino expansion, this whole thing between what do we preserve? And what do we, what do we move to the future on? We know growth is coming, but we also know we're up here for a reason. Uh, recently Eric and I and Bobby may have heard, you know, we went and fought the mountain line legislation. I bring that up because it wasn't really about the mountain line. What it was about is people that don't live in seventy-three percent of Colorado, which we're standing in the rural parts of Colorado, who've never seen a mountain line or a bobcat, who don't trust CPW or DNR as an example, and just arbitrarily said, we want to do this to you. And if you were at the hearing like we were, what you would have heard was, well, I've never seen a mountain line, but you know, the majority of people in Colorado feel, and if you think about that, that's a true statement. The majority of people in Colorado live on the front range, eighty-five percent. That's going to happen more and more and more. And so it wasn't about the mountain line, it was about standing up for our rights. When the commissioners did that for all of us, we believed it was Cripple Creek rights. It was Teller County, it was all of us. And that's going to happen more and more. Um, you pick an initiative, you pick a thing that's stuck in your craw and you'll see it. So we need to work together and we've always had a great relationship with Cripple Creek. Tomorrow night we'll be in Victor. In two weeks, we'll be at Woodland Park doing the same thing. It's crazy season again, we've got elections going on. I can tell you, your commissioners are directly involved in that too, trying to pick the right people or help pick the right people, so to the whims of the voters, because people make a difference, just like this great council. And so we're here today just to basically say, I think we're going to be okay. I think we're going to get through COVID. I'd like to see the business after hours again. And we see the controversy, uh, some of your small business owners have contacted us directly about things. I know we've made some decisions which we respect on advance or not. Uh, it's been about a year since the casino organizations have reached out to your commissioners. We were working with them quite a bit when it came to COVID, but it's been kind of quiet and we're watching expansion. So what we really want to do is, is tell you, we love you, we want to hug you, we're not here to criticize, but we just want to get reintegrated, because I think the opportunities that we're facing and the challenges are going to be great. And, uh, if you think people don't call us about the size of these, this expansion, you know, uh, and again, that's not a criticism they do, so we just want to stay synced with you. I'll also tell you personally that you remember when the governor came and it had been twenty-five years since we had a governor care about this county. Uh, he's called us personally since then. He called us to tell us where he was at on the things that he promised. He's called us to congratulate people in various positions here, and he said he wants to come back. Uh, he also talked about vetoing certain legislation if it got up there. And yes, we know, we're all smart people in this room, that he's up for reelection. Yes, he's a Democrat, most of us are Republicans. But at the end of the day, I think if we can leave that divisiveness behind us and find some common ground, and I think it has to do with housing and it has to do with schools and our kids. Last thing I'll leave with, I forgive it to Eric and then Bob. Uh, I sit on a lot of boards, as all the commissioners do, and I sit on a lot of the ones here in the southern part of the county, which is, which is my district, um, although we go to all of them. There's a little girl here at your school, and I won't tell your name because I want to protect her and her family. Uh, but Miriam, you're a great superintendent, came and she gave us a presentation this board. And our kids, our kids have figured it out. This isn't normal, right? There's a lot of divisiveness, there's a lot of anger. So these kids in this school right over here at Crescent have started a kindness campaign. And so I don't mind telling you, as an old soldier, they had me crying when they handed me a little smiley face and little heart, and she says, well, you know, sir, she's a little girl. She says, we got spies in the school. Uh, we won't tell them who, but they go around, they look for people doing nice things to people, and then we present them this, and I think at some future date, they're going to come present to you their T-shirt, and it says kindness is the new cool. And so that really affected me, you know, as an old crusty soldier and one of your county commissioners. I went home and I said, well, hell, if they can do that, why can't we? You know, what's, what's wrong with us? And so we have never had an adversary relationship with the county seat, with the great town of Cripple Creek. We're just here tonight to say, I think we can do better. We can remember where we were two years ago, be grateful that we're still here. You know, we did lose Mayor Carr, you know, there's other people that are still in harm's way. But I think we can do better and we're here to do that with you, whether it's opportunities on funding that's coming, whether it's getting you the notoriety you need with state government, because we're all armed with that, or whether it's just helping to fan the flames the other way. So, and I take those calls and I know the mayor and I are very close. I don't call you mayor and tell you, hey, I just got another angry person. I'll take those calls because I, I know you so well, I know where we're headed. And we want to be part of the solution with you. So to the extent we can help you, uh, as we come out of COVID and look at economic recovery, we're all praying that there's not going to be a war in Europe, because we know what that's going to do to our economy. There's a lot of things that can happen that we can't control, but, but we can control relationships. And so, uh, from the bottom of my heart, we love you guys, we're here for you, and anything you need, we all have each other's number. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'll turn it over to Eric Stone.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman and, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Uh, my name is Eric Stone for the record, and I am the District Three representative on the commission. Uh, I live in Woodland Park, uh, but, uh, you know, Cripple Creek in history is always something that, uh, very dear to my heart, but, you know, the, the thing I really wanted to talk with you about today is that, you know, and, uh, Commissioner Williams actually, you know, touched on it just a little bit, which is we're in kind of a transitionary period right now. We're in this transition, of course, coming out of the pandemic. And I'll even go a little further than the commissioner said, that we turned a corner. I think, in my opinion, we've turned the corner, we're down the road, and I ain't looking back. You know, um, I just, it's time to, to get on to our future. And part of our future is, is really exciting, because we talk about transition, is that, you know, you here in Cripple Creek, you're in the process, very close to hiring a new city manager. Uh, Victor's going to be hiring a new city manager. City Woodland Park just hired a new city manager within the last year or so. And now here in the county, we have a longtime county administrator who's retiring, and we appreciate her service. But again, there's another opportunity, another new administrator coming in who works for these representative bodies, uh, where we get to leave entrenched, uh, ideas or entrenched, uh, divisions in the past and, and forge ahead to do great things. And I think you guys have, have made some, uh, you know, some great steps here in Cripple Creek in regards to, you know, trying to solve and, uh, your, your housing issues and some of the other issues and becoming a more sustainable, uh, independent city. Um, and, you know, and I said it a long time ago, actually, before I was elected, uh, if you were, if you remember ever seeing Dan or I out on a street corner waving a sign with our name on it, um, we, we got the chance to talk a lot. And one of the things we talked about is, you know, where we're standing, and we were at that point, uh, standing a lot in Woodland Park, is that regardless of the fact that we were standing in Woodland Park, is we're standing in Teller County. So my message to you is, you know what, if you've got a problem in Cripple Creek, then we got a problem in Teller County, and we're here to support you with that. Thank you very much.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you so much for able of us to come talk to you. My name is Bob Campbell, I'm one of the longer-term elected officials. And I just want to say thank you for what you all do. Um, as Mr. Stone even mentioned, we're all Teller County citizens. I've been here since the early nineties, built my own house, raised my kids here, they went to school. It's all about being a part of the community. And obviously, people come and go, and characteristics of the community change all the time. But we need to do everything we can to maintain our community. A lot of that is maintaining our local control, maintaining individual rights. And those are the two things that up at that Golden Dome place in Denver that we go up and testify all the time for, is maintaining those two things. It's about local control. Let us be in charge of what we do, because we know our community the best. And, um, Mr. Williams had a great point that, you know, it's all about being positive. We're all essentially a part of the same team, we all help our citizens. If you're an incorporated city or not, I happen to live north of Divide, where I'm not in a city, but we have a town of Divide that's not really a town, but it's sort of a town. And it's all about community. And that's what we work for every single day. And change happens, but the, the goal is to stay positive. We're happy to work with you on issues, initiatives, things we can do together, anything that you see an opportunity that we may be able to team together to do things, we're always open to things like that. And I'd just like to say thank you so much for what you all do, and I appreciate you having to see her tonight. Thank you so much.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to thank the commissioners. Uh, as I'm getting close to the end of my third tour of duty as city administrator, uh, and I think we are getting close this time. Uh, I will say that working, uh, with this group of commissioners has really been a pleasure and an honor, and they certainly do support our community. So thank you, thank you. Uh, at this point, I'd like to introduce our new fire chief, who I wanted to introduce formally back in January, but, uh, between the snowstorms and agenda cancellations. So Chief.
In a week of COVID.
Chief Joe O'Connor. Welcome to Cripple Creek formally.
Well, thank you very much.
He's hit the ground running. I'll let him give a few words, and then he has a presentation for, uh, one of our personnel. So Joe.
Thank you. I would like to express my gratitude in inviting me to Cripple Creek. This is a, um, a second career for me, if you will. I got a chance to retire out of Peachtree City, Georgia, after twenty years of service as the fire chief for the last nine. Cripple Creek is a very unique community, as was Peachtree City in many ways. But, um, the fire department you have here is wonderful. You have excellent, well-committed, well-trained people. Their heart is in Cripple Creek, they want to be here, they want to work hard, they want to serve this community. Um, and that is exactly the organization I wanted to join. So I thank you for the opportunity to be entrusted as the outsider that nobody knew, and why should we hire you? Well, I, I will do my best. And, and it was a very interesting series of interview questions. I hope I, I guess I did all right, so. But, um, Cripple Creek was well-cared-for prior to my arrival, and that is the presentation I'd like to make tonight. At the peak of the COVID crisis, Cripple Creek lost its appointed fire chief, initially to the countywide COVID response, and then, um, ultimately, the chief changed jobs. And one of our captains stepped up to the challenge. And he kept it running, he kept the wheels on the track, and he, um, he kept the workforce motivated. He, he served this community very well. Ryan Lowmeyer, Captain Lowmeyer, has been with the city for an extended period of time. He has served it well in his current role and, and in all other roles. But when I arrived, my take, as I expressed in my interview, was you have a sound acting chief in place. He is competent, he is trained, and any way that we can support him, I think we should. He didn't want the chief's job, I respect that. There days, I don't want the chief's job. I'll take it anyway, but it's just the way, the, the, the way the cookie crumbles sometimes. But I, I respect that, um, but we did prepare a proclamation to thank Ryan for his service for over a year and a half as acting fire chief. Um, I'm very grateful to be here. I appreciate having the month of December off. Thank you to this council for, for allowing me a little bit more time to make the transition, so. But I would like to ask if we could make that presentation to Ryan now, for the proclamation as acting fire chief.
Joe, you want to go ahead and do the proclamation, or you want to do the finance report?
Well, we go ahead with the proclamations, Mr. Mayor, if we could.
Okay, I have a proclamation here. Whereas Ryan Lowmar has served the residents of Cripple Creek through the fire department since nine, since two thousand four. And whereas Ryan Lowmar has served in a leadership position since his appointment, the lieutenant in February two oh seven, and captain in March of two eleven. And whereas Captain Lowmar was appointed to serve as acting fire chief in March two thousand twenty, when the former fire chief was unable to fulfill his duties to the department due to other COVID nineteen responsibilities. Whereas acting chief Lowmar guided fire department response to the COVID nineteen pandemic, adjusted responses policies, policies, and attended numerous meetings to ensure all personnel and the community's safety navigated in the unprecedented situation. And whereas acting chief Lowmar ensured, ensured essential operations, remained funded while the city endured significant revenue shortfall regarding related budget setbacks. And whereas acting chief Lowmar provided leadership and consistency with the entire department while continuing to serve with his shift for twenty-four hour operations. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Melford Ashworth, Mayor Melford Ashworth, hereby recognize Ryan Lowmar for his dedication and leadership during his service to our community as acting fire chief. Ryan Low, black here. I hope you, uh, put that up and look at it every day.
Mayor and council, I appreciate this. It was an honor to, to step up and do that. It wasn't fun at times dealing with COVID, but I can't say it wouldn't have been as easy if it wasn't for the guys underneath me. And, you know, they, they really stepped up and helped me out. And, uh, thank you for this.
Thank you, Captain. You brought, uh, Ryan on as the acting chief in June of twenty. I came on as the interim, uh, in July of twenty. It's been a, a great, uh, pleasure working with Ryan and his team, and, uh, he's done a fine job for the city. So it's a pleasure to get him some recognition. Mr. Moser, if you would come up, uh, as you know, one of the other transitions we're doing is bringing up a new, uh, theater manager. Mel is going to leave us after a prolonged period of time. And I would like to give him the opportunity to make a brief presentation to council regarding his transition plan. So, Mel, thanks.
Mayor and, uh, city council, uh, we've hired a, a pretty, pretty, uh, pretty good fellow, from what I can tell. Uh, you know, I, I know him a little bit, uh, he was in a show here at the Butte back in two thousand eighteen. Uh, he also did some filming up around this area. His name is Zach Santos, Santo. Stanyel. Yeah, who's, thank you. Whoever gave you that.
If you sure learned your lines.
Well, so you know, I didn't hire a good friend, how's that? Uh, just, I'd just like to read a little bit. Zach holds a bachelor of arts in, from Michigan State University in the political science, pre-law, with an emphasis on theater. For over ten years, experienced a stage and film actor. Also, a matter of fact, and I told you he was here on, on the Butte stage, so we're not, uh, one of the things that concerned me the most was finding somebody from a metropolitan area to come out here and run the theater. Uh, we've been fortunate that, uh, from, from the very beginning, from the Mackin era, we've always had somebody here that understood the area and, and understood kind of the patron base, and, and that's very important when you're, when you're running a theater. But he, uh, his wife was born and raised in Lake George, and so he spent many summers out here. Uh, and, uh, he also, I wanted to tell you about his, uh, his two-year conservancy at Baron Studio Theater in Los Angeles. Now, I'm, I'm sure a lot of you don't know that, but it's probably one of the top five conservatories in the, in the United States. So I was just been on the phone with him over these past couple of, of weeks. Uh, he's so excited, he's already ninety percent through a house that he's, he and his wife are going to purchase. It's about ten minutes from the theater, so he's jumping in with both feet. Uh, he's, he's, he's looking at the longevity. All of his ideas aren't about jumping in and changing everything, uh, in the first year, but, uh, he's going to, uh, take his time, and we're going to see some very interesting, uh, new, new programs, I think you'll see at the Butte. So I'm excited about that. I actually wish I was sticking around so I could see what he could do. Um, so I, I, I think we all should be excited about it. I'd like to stick around, if it's okay with the council, uh, for a while, to get him grounded in a little bit. Uh, it's a one-man show up there, so, uh, it wasn't like in the past when we, we'd switch over this position, we'd always have somebody there that had been there for years. I'm talking about Thin Air Theater Company and Mickey Burdick and Morgan Jingo. Everybody was there to help, but this particular, uh, time, there isn't going to be anybody there. And so I'd really like you to give me the option of, uh, sticking around for six weeks or so. I'd like to stick around through the, uh, community show, which is the end of April, so that I, so that he can get his feet wet a little bit, and I'm there to, to, to help him through all of it. There's going to be a lot of, lot of little things involved, uh, getting to know the sponsors, getting to know the patrons. I'm going to take him around up and down the street to, to all the different businesses in town and get him introduced and try to make his transition as, as smooth as possible. So if you'll allow that, I've talked to Paul and Ray, has also been in on that discussion. And if you'll give me that opportunity, I'd like to, uh, I'd like to help as much as I can to make the transition as smooth as possible. I hate to go. You've really, uh, if I could finish up with a button on it, uh.
Mr. Mayor, do you have a response to his request?
I do. I want a proclamation.
Yep.
I have a proclamation here. Mel, uh, whereas Mel Moser has dedicated his life and energy towards the successful oversight and operation of the Cripple Creek Butte Theater. And whereas Mel Moser has contributed to the historical preservation of Melgrah Theater in the city of Cripple Creek for the enjoyment and entertainment of tens of thousands of citizens, old and young alike. And whereas the patrons of the Butte Theater recognize Mel Moser for his significant acting talents and outstanding performances in more than two thousand and fifty stage acts. Whereas Mel Moser has encouraged and supported his fellow actors and actors for more than forty-six years through his gracious and kind direction, respect, and admiration. And whereas Mel Moser has provided theater, arts, and humanities to the residents and visitors of Cripple Creek with a welcome smile, encouraging words, and humble personality. Now, therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Melford Ashworth, do hereby proclaim that from this day forward, the building, housing, the Butte Theater in Cripple Creek, Colorado, is so be named the Mel Moser Building.
I'd bring it to you, but it weighs about fifty pounds.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone.
Something else.
Thank you very much. I'm an actor, so unless I have a script, I don't want to. Thank you, I should appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I cannot top that, so I might even want to try. Thank you very much.
And one thing we didn't get done, Mel didn't introduce our, uh, director, theater director.
Well, he was going to zoom in, and since we're zoomless, it'll have to be another day.
Yeah, he's not here yet.
Okay. All right. Finance director, Paul, can you say anything for us?
Good evening, council. I do have a number of items on the agenda, so I'll take up your time at that moment.
Okay. Well, we didn't have the public hearings and date, updates and presentations. One thing I would like to say to the community that '21 was kind of a stressful year, but we accomplished a lot. We got through it. And, you know, I think one of the main accomplishments was doing the wage survey and, and being able to adjust the wages upward so that our employees are on the same level with our peers. And I've heard good things from them about, about the wage increase. And we've got a lot of other things. Got the incentives for the building to get builders and developers up here, and I see things is starting to move along. So I think we accomplished a lot there, council. We do a lot of credit for getting this put together. With that, we'll go ahead and continue through our business. Your business, business item A, consider approval of regulation 2022-01 establishing designated public locations for the posting of meeting notices as required by the Colorado Open Meetings Law. Melissa?
Good evening, council. This is the annual resolution that council considers to establish the designated places for posting our meeting notices as required by the Colorado Open Meetings Law. They are City Hall Post Office and our website.
Thank you, Melissa.
Did I hear a motion to approve the resolution?
I, I motion that we approve Resolution 2022-01 establishing, establishing the designated public locations for the posting of city meeting notices as required by the Colorado Open Meetings Law.
Second, vote please.
Councilman Salamani?
Yes.
Mayor Protown Leatherland?
Yes.
Councilwoman Trenary, Councilman Green, Mayor Ashworth?
Yes.
Okay. Agent Adam B, request approval of appointment of JR Gatlin to HP Commission seat. Sophia Ballas to the alternate seat in the Historic Preservation Board. Renee Miller is planning a historic preservation coordinator. Renee, you want?
Good evening, council. We have two vacant seats on our Historic Preservation Board. One is for Commissioner, the other is for, ultimate. Sorry. I'm losing my marbles a little here. So we've got two really great candidates this year. Unfortunately, we're losing Stephen Beach as a Commissioner. However, he will be zooming in on all meetings and is agreed to be a contributing member of the public, even though he's not part of Cripple Creek anymore. He has a lot of background and a great contributor, and he, he wants to stick, stick with us and help us just for like public comments, things like that. So really happy to at least be keeping him on board. I have two candidates for the Commissioner. I have JR Gatlin, and you have a letter there that gives you his qualifications. He's an architect. He sat on many planning, planning boards, a lot of different boards in municipal, in other cities and stuff. Anyway, he is here. If you, I'd like to introduce him. JR, if you'd like to come up and, so everybody knows who he is. He's going to be our, if you approve him, this is who we'd like to have on our commission. And if you have any questions for him?
Mayor and city council, thank you. Again, my name's JR Gatlin. I'm not going to reiterate why I think I'm qualified. That's in front of you. What I'd like to encourage you to know is that I want to have a very positive effect on Cripple Creek. I've lived here four years in a historic house, and I want to obviously preserve the rich heritage of Cripple Creek. One thing I want to avoid doing is Blackhawk-ing Cripple Creek, and that means, from what I saw, when I grew up, I played poker in Cripple, in Blackhawk, and I saw the decimation of everything in there. And I see our new casinos, and I totally applaud them because I don't think they interfere with the, the heritage. I mean, I think it's a definite positive. And I, I definitely want to continue with that, but at the same time, preserve what our rich heritage displays, both commercially and in the residential area. So with that, my agenda really will be to support the ordinances and the codes. I may want to think about revisiting some of the things I see in the city that don't seem to be following the ordinances and codes. I may not be able to affect that, but I certainly intend to present it and say, why are we allowing this to happen? And I'm not including the, the two developments. I think those are outstanding. Like to see refurbishing the gold belt plaques. They seem to be diminishing in quality, and I think that's a, a great asset for the city to bring in tourism. And with that, definitely, I want to ensure that our national historic landmark qualifications are preserved. So if you have any questions, I'm, I'm here to answer them.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you for applying.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Oh, and I would, I would approve that sign on.
Our second candidate is Sophia Belize, and she, how do you say that? Ballis. She is living in the old Linda Goodman House up here on Carr Avenue. She's a real advocate for historic preservation, and she's applied to be our alternate, and she's also here. Sophia, stand up, so everyone can know who you are. And if you have any questions for her? Do you have anything you'd like to say, Sophia?
I would like to say that I will be honored to be part of the Historical Preservation Commission, and that I will be a positive contribution. I have a master's degree in fine arts and in conservation and restoration. And so thank you for this opportunity.
Right, Julie. Thank you very much.
Thank you for applying.
Did I hear a motion to seek these people? One other thing was Jeff Regester.
What about him?
Well, you, you've, the terms have been changed, if you want.
That's, that's the next item on the agenda, if you want to. I can do it all at once if you'd like.
Okay.
What's happening with our, our board right now, we've got a couple of, of our commissioners who would like to change their term.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. I believe because these are separate agenda, I am seeking approval, it would be appropriate to proceed with a motion and vote on item B and then move into items.
Did I hear a request to appoint JR Gatlin, HP, HP Commission, and Sophia Ballas as an alternate?
Yes. I ask that we approve the appointment of JR Gatlin, DHP Commission seat, and Sophia Ballas to the alternate seat of the Historic Preservation Board.
Second, vote please.
Mayor Protown Leatherland?
Yes.
Councilman Salamani?
Yes.
Councilwoman Trenary, Councilman Green, Mayor Ashworth?
Yes.
Okay, item C, request approval for appointment of existing HP Commissioners Reed, Granger, change from three-year to one-year term, Mike Gross from two-year to three-year term, Dixie Claire from a one-year to a two-year term, and reappointment of Jeff Regester to a two-year term. Renee?
You pretty much said, said what I was going to say. Our commission has, normally I come before you, and, you know, we have one or two people that are changing every year, but with COVID, we, we missed that, those meetings last year. However, all of these people are moving to different terms, so I'm bringing them all at once. Reed is wanting to wind down a little bit. He doesn't want to be on a three-year term again, so we've, we've just switched everybody around, and that's the nominations that the commission came up with at our last meeting. So a few proofs of those.
Did I hear a request approval?
Yeah, I motion that we approve. You guys are going to have your hands full, I'll tell you, coming down. I require, that we approve the reappointment of the existing HP Commissioners. Reed Granger changed from three-year to a one-year term, Mike Gross from a two-year to a three-year term, Dixie Claire from one-year to a two-year term, and reappointment of Jeff, Regester to a two-year term.
Second, vote please.
Councilman Salamani?
Yes.
Mayor Protown Leatherland?
Yes.
Councilman Green, Councilwoman Trenary, Mayor Ashworth?
Yes.
Okay, Agent Adam B, consider approval of financing firm and lease agreement with acquisition of a street sweeper. Alert.
Good evening, council. I think everybody's very pleased that we're going to be acquiring a new street sweeper. The purchase price on it is $198,950. Many people felt that the old one was getting to where all it did was make dust clouds. So this one, Steve says is going to, where is he?
He's over here. Yeah, sorry. He's grinning over here.
He said this one is going to do more than create dust clouds, so that's great. We reached out to three different financing firms. As you see, we've got the different quotes there. The rates are fairly similar. One is $300 cheaper, and, and this is over the long five-year period. One's $556. But we're talking with Steve. We're, we would like to go with Timco, their financing arm. They're the actual manufacturer. They're who Steve has been working with quite closely, and they brought a number of test models up, and we just think it would be good to continue working with those people that we have been. So that is our recommendation. Aaron, the city attorney, has approved the lease document and the different attachments that you see there after a number of points were negotiated. So we're good to go if you approve this this evening. I know Steve is anxious to get it ordered.
Did I hear a motion?
Yes, I motion that we consider the approval, motion that we approve the approval of financing and the financing and lease agreement for acquisition of a street sweeper.
Second, vote.
Mayor Protown Leatherland?
Uh, yes.
Councilman Salamani?
Yes.
Councilman Green, Councilwoman Trenary, Mayor Ashworth?
Yes.
That sentence was a little strange.
Thank you, council, so much. You see, our streets can really need this.
All over this.
Look forward to the no dust piles.
Okay, consider renewal of lease for 2022 with edge wellness and rehabilitation at the city's medical building. Paul?
Good evening, council. This was, is just kind of a bit of housekeeping. We're renewing the lease for one year. We were going to be doing this in January. That's why it's all stated. But with the meeting cancel, it's coming before you tonight, and it's for $500 a month. And these are the folks that provide physical and occupational therapy out at the Medical Plaza.
Did I hear a motion? Yes, I motion that we approve the renewal of lease for 2022 with edge wellness and rehabilitation at the city's medical building.
Second, vote please.
Councilman Salamani?
Yes.
Mayor Protown Leatherland?
Yes.
Councilman Green, Councilwoman Trenary, Mayor Ashworth?
Yes.
Agent Adam F, consider request to change budget funding use for the district museum. Alert.
As you recall, in the fall budget meetings, the district museum was applying for a grant with History Colorado, and we had agreed to provide matching dollars in the amount of $37,500. They were not able to get that grant from History Colorado. They had higher priorities and limited funding. So Mr. Burkha, who is here, they still have needs. You know, they, some of them were health and safety, and some of them are just preserving the building so it doesn't deteriorate. So they have gone out and asked for funding from Newmont. They are providing $5,000, and they're asking the city that we make available of the $37,575, $10,750 so that they can complete some of the major components they wanted to. Those are outlined in your document, but. Bill, would you like to say anything?
No, just if you have any questions.
I, I have one, Bill. This is a little off subject. Who owns the sign that says District Museum, right there as you come in the north entrance to your apartment?
District Museum Information Card or Car or Information Center?
The sign. Yeah, there's a sign.
That's, that's the city's, right? So, so it's the first entrance coming down the hill?
Right, yes.
Yeah, that's the city's.
Okay, I think we need to look at that someday.
They, they are working on it.
There he is.
I have been working with Michelle.
Okay.
She has a sign ordered for that. I don't know when it's going to be in, but we will be putting a new sign up there.
Yeah, okay. Because it's pretty faded and deteriorating.
Yes.
Thank you.
I think that was kind of considered part of that project where we're doing the restoration on the road or itself, and that money is in the budget this year.
Did I hear a motion?
Yeah, I'll motion that we approve the request to change budget of funding use for the district museum.
Second, vote please.
Councilwoman Trenary, Councilman Green, Mayor Protown Leatherland?
Yes.
Councilman Salamani?
Yes.
Mayor Ashworth?
Yes.
Thank you, council.
Thank you, Bill.
Thanks very much.
Consider approval to accept a grant from Innovative Affordable Housing Strategies Planning Grant. Jeff Moser.
Council members, before I get into that grant, I do want to announce a grant that was awarded this morning, CBDGPS Grant 22-400. It's an additional grant that we requested for the, for the 100-block West Bennett Avenue for the community of caring remodel. And this grant was specific for securing IT as well as furniture. We were fortunate enough that DOLA had some money left over from last year, and were, they were willing to provide us with that additional funding to help that project along. So that, that award came in this morning. So I did want to let you know about that. And that was in the amount of $64,351. So that, that project has gotten some significant support from DOLA, which is fantastic. The, the letter that you have in your packet can be a little misleading. It does say we were denied. What we were denied is when I submitted the application for the Innovative Affordable Housing Strategies Planning Grant. That's because of the That's because of, the funding is available through House Bill 211271. We requested $75,800. Those funds were to be used to look at more incentive opportunities for development, review the ordinances that have already been passed, and also do an investigation into whether we want to do a land trust or create a housing authority to help us maintain affordability on housing in Southern Teller County. The part that was denied is when I submitted the request, I submitted it with a request for zero match that the grant itself did allow for that request. We were denied that zero match. In fact, we were denied any reduction in the match. The match was 25%. So I'm requesting this evening that the city council approve a match of $18,950 to get that grant of $75,800 to likely reach out and get a contractor or consultant to help us with that land trust and the ordinance, the incentive ordinances, reviewing those. So, that's the request. This grant also puts us eligible for an affordable housing grant that will be available hopefully this summer, but I have heard they may be bumping it back to next fall. That grant has a maximum ask of 3 million and a minimum ask of 500,000 and can be used for infrastructure such as roads, streets, gutters, sidewalks, and utilities. And we do have several projects identified where those funds could be spent.
Paul, do we have the money?
Yes, we have the money.
Yeah, I should have said, I have met with Paul.
I'll print some more.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Sounds like someone else we have. I motion that we approve to accept a grant from Innovative Affordable Housing Strategies Planning Grant.
Second, vote please.
Councilman Salamani?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Litherland?
Yes.
Councilwoman Green? Councilwoman Trenary? Mayor Ashworth?
Yes.
Item H, Request To Consider Approval of Regulation 2022-3 To Groin The Personnel Handbook As Presented, Carol Thompson?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you so much for your time this evening and for your thorough review of the Personnel Handbook that was provided to you in advance of the meeting. I would be remiss to not mention all of the things that I have to offer to people who helped through this process. And Aaron Smith and Charles Norton were a huge help with me, and I really appreciated the opportunity to work with Charles Norton, who has years and a wealth of knowledge in coming up with some changes to our document that we really feel provide us a really good opportunity for some more flexibility within our handbook. Heather has been instrumental as well, so I definitely appreciate her. And Paul and Ray have been a significant help as well, and Paul running some numbers by him. So this is one of those times where sometimes you have to make a difficult decision and balance the role of our city employees as well as our local government. I think that we did a pretty good job at doing that. So I'd be happy to answer any specific questions that you have that are addressed in the handbook. And then I did provide you with a supplemental memo today, and I provided that to our city clerk, Melissa Gish, so she has that for record. And it's just ultimately just making a few typo corrections. So again, that's a memo that's dated February 16th.
I just wanted to... Thank you, Carol. You guys, your department has put a lot of hours in on this. So if you, do I hear a motion to consider?
I, all of that on, thanks for all your, everybody's efforts. I know that they're not easy to put together, and of course, they never make everybody happy either.
Right.
But that's what it goes.
Well, thank you, and I appreciate your patience. And as Charles mentioned too, this was a project that we actually started in 2020, and with COVID, our, I guess, attention was diverted several times, whether it was with us or with Charles Norton, and trying to get back and get this done. So I, again, appreciate your guys' support and understanding as well.
Okay, denial motion that we approve Resolution 2022-03 Regarding The Personnel Handbook As Presented.
Second, vote please.
Councilwoman Green? Councilwoman Trenary? Mayor Pro Tem Litherland?
Yes.
Councilman Salamani?
Yes.
Mayor Ashworth?
Yes.
Item I, Election Of Mayor Pro Tem For Cripple Creek Municipal Code Section 2-2-30. Every year, hopefully the first meeting after the first. Do your starts. At this time, I'm going to open this over for nomination. Pro Tem? I'll nominate Tom Litherland. Anybody else? Okay, here are no other nominations. I guess we need to probably vote on this.
Does he accept?
I make motion that we let Mayor Pro Tem, Tom Litherland, for another year. Hopefully, it's a lot better year than '21. So, vote please.
I'll second.
Mayor Pro Tem Litherland?
I believe I'm allowed to vote for myself, so I won't vote for myself.
Councilman Salamani?
Yes.
Councilwoman Green? Councilwoman Trenary? And Mayor Ashworth?
Yes.
Congratulations, Tom.
Well, thank you. I appreciate your comments.
By the way, your face stays the same.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Well, with no other business, let somebody else get something. Adjourn this meeting. Next meeting is the 2nd of March?
Yes.
It's yours already. Fourth's gone. With that, my turn.
So I'll draft a letter.
Pardon?
I'll draft a letter that needs to go to DOLA.
You don't really, you could have run for Mayor Pro Tem.
Yeah, I got your approval.